Okay, at six o'clock, we're gonna call on the August second meeting with the whole city. Unit number one, where would you keep your order? Roll call, please, Alonda.
Yeah, you are. Mary Go. Here, Sean Hamilton.
Here.
Stay fine. We have C. Roberts.
Here.
And then.
Here. Please. The United States of America and to the Republic of America's citizens under God in this whole liberty and justice program. Okay, welcome those that are watching us hotline and welcome if you would like to introduce yourself.
Yeah, my name's Andrew Brenner. I'm the Indiania School Middle School Band Director for through the eighth grade. Previously, I was at Indian Creek up north in the town and was a graduate and lived in Bradwell, Illinois. So we're from the Georgia Duke College Northern Illinois University, you know. Glad to be here.
Welcome. Welcome. I didn't have it.
So they're starting me in the big time, just so I don't need to cooperate to. Is that grand? You're welcome to sit around too. So I have the one that you wanna do.
Okay, is there any communication before in regard to agenda items or anything in general? Okay, Mary, go ahead.
Yeah, but thank you now. It's to the school board. I'm gonna read it because we just received it. It says, "Thank you all so much for what each of you do in your leaving our schools. That's such a crucial role and you do it on your own time as a volunteer. Thank you for all the difficulty and challenging challenges that come with the job. I hope you know many are grateful and cheering you on. As a new church in Paul City, we hope to be blessing, be a blessing to the community and would love to help meet needs especially in the schools. Thank you again for all your hard work, Village Christian Church."
I get into that. So tonight, the pizza that was delivered was from that the church. After Meg's run, they contacted me earlier. Like they asked pretty decently. Really summer about wanting to purchase the pizza for them or just to show appreciation and what you do. So they're near the area. This is why Natalie is one of our reading specialists at the village childless center here. I hired her last year. She did a great job for us, but we thank them again. They're very nice of them to often do that and they paid for the pizza tonight.
Okay. All right, then. Are there any other items to board with, or move from the consented? You're done now. That'll enter data first to second motion to approve the consent agenda, including events, close session, regular meeting of July fifth. Board study session of the whole, July twenty sixth. The June activity fund reports, the U. Treasure reports, the July monthly manual checks report. July payrolls, August comes payable, personnel items, including approval of resignations, reinstate on classroom aids. Employee transfers, leave requests, extra curricular resignations, extra curricular assignments, job descriptions. We'll be close session minutes to open status and do a group of following building usage as listed. Dan Sol Rose and Cindy Seconds. Roll call, please, Alonda.
Denny Go hard.
Yes.
Very fun. Yes, very good. Yeah, Sam Hamilton.
Yes.
He brought us.
Yeah.
Yes. Okay, any questions about the ministry reports? Got a chance to include in the questions about? Okay, then Luke, anything you wanna add to the special hotline?
Nothing to add right now. A couple of the items we come up later and we talk a little bit more about that if you guys have any questions, but yeah.
Yeah, everything's very quick. Any questions of work? Okay, we're good then. Yeah, and then you wanted.
Kind of the same thing with Luke. There's something from another motion.
Okay. Anybody have any questions of the job? Okay, Mr. Spencer.
All right, so just Mr. There, remember the earlier few of the board gave me the authority to go ahead and employ personnel needed. Those are some of our new employees. Really, they're mainly aides and also maternity staff for us. So those are, those are listed there. Some support staff as well for cafeteria and then custodian, custodian to as well. Just wanted to let the board know that it's coming upon us two weeks from today. We'll have our students in the classrooms. Very exciting. It's hard to believe, but on that opening Monday, opening day, the breakfast is on August fourteenth at eight AM. Where members are also invited to, to that if you'd like. I might know Mr. Miller, if he there, give him a chance to talk with the staff after breakfast about eight thirty, like anybody is welcome to come to that if you'd like to. Just a reminder too, the joint conference I know it's in there, but the Friday focus they call now registration is open. If you're interested in that, I recommend you want to get the whole line, she can get you hooked up with those. And then it does start in November seventeenth for those who are going. So the reason, a reason there's no G A B C report is they gave Dan and I the month of July off, so we didn't have a report. They had a meeting in July for G A B C, but we'll have something. Maybe, yeah. So that's all I have. I'm glad to entertain any questions tonight.
Any questions of Spencer? All right, any questions about the athletic coverage report? Here, we're gonna be getting some more numbers here, though.
Yeah, just real quick.
Yeah.
Now too, today I got a text or yeah, text from Mr. Mumra. Soccer started today, their middle school soccer, which were approved last year. And they had forty nine students athletes to offer for that, and that was sixth graders, seventh graders, and eighth graders. So a good number. Remember, we did our softball class last week. They actually have their first game right now. And then baseball had crowds Monday, Tuesday. And then anybody who was welcome to try out for soccer, saying it is COVID. So they did have forty nine students show up today. Good number, so we'll look forward to seeing that for the rest of the morning.
Okay, any communications from the foreign regarding agenda items or anything in general? All right, then let's jump right into old business. I will entertain for you to approve a one-year agreement with private sports, total cost for the total cost of four thousand seven hundred and forty dollars. I was on some moves and Dan seconds. Jay, anything you wanna say about that?
No, we discussed the study sessions, so.
Right, what you like about it.
Yep.
Okay, roll call, please, Alonda.
Sean Hamilton.
Yes.
Denny Go hard.
Yes.
Very good. Stay fine. Yes, you right.
Yes. Yes. Okay, Mr. Spencer, you wanna update us on the?
Sure. Yes, definitely to. And we got a little slideshow put together that Mr. Smith's gonna have up there for me and can't be too peaceful for the app. Just wanted to go through a few hangers fourteen or fifteen slides about kind of where we're at and, and where we're moving on, moving forward and where we've been. So if you look, Dresden agreement is the set. We have it for until year eleven, year twenty twenty six. And that gives us seventeen point three million dollars a year and money from Dresden. Constellation did disclose intention to revitalize, so they have not filed for yet, but they have disclosed that their intention to do so. One of the questions we have is how long will Dresden be here? We don't know, right? It could be after the, it may not be an extension. It may be done after that, maybe an extension for twenty nine more years. We just don't know. So planning for that kind of led to where we're at. And if you remember in July of last year, twenty twenty two, I produced my strategic plan. We had a strategic plan meeting where we had over sixty stakeholders who've been invited that included school personnel, parents, students, community members, elected officials. We ended up finding out fifty people that showed up. It was a very good day. Again, we appreciate the church, Methodist church allowing us to be there and use the studies for that. But what out of that came, a lot of facilities improvement was a big, major topic that came from that. And from there, the board decided that the district needed to have a facilities improvement plan and you instructed us to go forward with that and move forward with that. With our architects, Corbin, Corbin and Clark. We met with Corbin Clark and Alex has done a lot of that for us. You've met Alex before. He's been and shown us quite a few different designs and ideas. But he, he met with us and we went to each building and it was all five of them. And he had another fifty more stakeholders. From aides to teachers to support personnel to administration. So we went to each building and asked us, give us your wireless dreams. What would you love to have? No holds barred. Give us, give us everything you'd like. And we knew that there would be a lot of options that we had that we, we could be considering. We also knew that our health, life, safety was coming up this, this summer. So we know there's gonna be some other things we're having to take care of during this time. Then in December of last year, at the board meeting, we took the feedback from the focus groups that we had from each building. And summarized each item that they had, that they were interested in and all they gave all those options to the board. The board then directed the committee to prioritize those options. And we created a committee and we'll talk about that and that was made up of that. And that committee then looked at those options and decided, here's what we think you should prioritize and bring back to the board as a whole. And then January, shared the report with all the options with the board focus groups, with the board focus group, with everybody. So the prioritized options here, we developed a committee, which was board member Armin, former board member Lander, and then incoming board member Ingo Hard. And then Jason, Denny Look, I, or myself, made up that committee. We reviewed all the options and identified those priority one, two, and three items by, by year, what year we should put them in. And then if you remember the January twenty three board study session, we shared that list with the board. We have a, we shared the list of priority, prioritized items. Here it is. I'm not gonna go through this again. We've seen it a few times. It's out there. If you would like another copy of it, please let me know. I'd be glad to share it with you. And actually, the slideshow I can share with you if you'd like. So those were our prioritized items. From there, we went to how, what's this gonna cost us? Well, right now, these priority one items for fiscal year twenty four are, they're on the docket. Middle School foreign project, that's done. That's been completed. Turned out very well. We're working on the fitness space. The asphalt repair, repaired, we've been around district wide. They've been working on those. The new road, the parking area, it's being used tonight, which is great. The new parking lot back there is great to see that we don't have a bunch of cars parked here. They're in the back taking advantage of the softball. They're, they, they literally just striped this today. Today was the day they striped everywhere. The very back lot, whatever, been striped with everything else. They literally just striped and finished up around about two o'clock, two thirty. They're pretty, it's pretty impressive how fast they get that up. So those are things that are done. The high school football turf contract, that's the max, the estimate, two point one million. That we'll be talking about later on and see if the board ready to move forward with as far as getting that, those bids out. And then the H L S of the health and life safety study, which will be due to us at the end of twenty twenty three. So we expected those results in December and that there will be some items that we'll have to take care of that time. So then you move on to F Y twenty five costs. And these are estimated, as we call it. And remember, all these things that are estimated, even the turf project, these aren't things that are necessarily going to happen for sure. It's still in the process. The board stuff make the decision at the rate and move forward with those or not. Again, we'll have some health, life, safety products that'll be coming up. We just don't know what the cost of those will be, but we know that we'll have items that are gonna come up that will need to be fixed. Possibility of the high school baseball and softball turf projects roughly around three million dollars. Restaurant renovations and the furniture packaging renovation swap out. It will take time, over time to do, but this is kind of what we have in place right now is estimated items that we might have for F Y twenty six. Budget twenty seven. Oh, you did. Yeah, thank you.
Yep.
So I jumped ahead. Sorry. Are you jumped that I didn't see a change? That was F Y twenty five. F Y twenty six, more health, life, safety projects will be coming on. The possibility of the middle school concession slash storage facility with restrooms back behind us close to the baseball softball fields. Right now, if you remember, we use porta potties for the restrooms. There is no concession and storage is really minimal at this time. Again, we'll continue with the furniture packaging, restaurant renovations and put those in play as, as we go along. Again, just because they're on the list, I can't say this enough. It doesn't mean that we're moving forward, going through it. And this is the plan and it's estimates, estimated cost, estimated ideas and priority one items. So then it brings us to F Y twenty seven, again estimated, probably health and life safety projects. The possibility of the E C C gym and that all, because there will be some renovations inside the, the school to open up the cafeteria a little bit more. But also have a gross motor skills room and possibly some other classrooms, parking lot there. So there's some other items that go into that as a possibility. We know that we have some HVAC and roofing projects that will have to be taken care of during this time. So these are all the priority one items that we've gotten through the facility improvement plan and or health, life, safety projects. So how do we pay for this, right? That's what we've been trying to figure out, right? The magic question there, how do we pay for it? So we had, we had Elizabeth stop by last week and we'll talk about that, but a couple, a couple things we could do. We can do deficit budget, which the board is usually not in favor of. They'll do Plato reserves and allocate operating funds. Not, not a popular with anyone, right? We could do bonds. We can incur the debt and take advantage of the Dresden, Dresden tax agreement. Right now, we have the tax agreement. We should use that money while we have them on our taxes. While they're paying for half the taxes, use that. Really, the best position that puts us in is the combo, putting, using part of our budget as well as part of the bonds. Recommendation from Elizabeth from Raymond James was that Jason and I both agree that that's probably the best avenue for the board to go. And we've moved forward with some of that already with paying with some of our cash on hands to pay for some of these projects already. But it's still be something that we can, we can look at. Last week, again, we had Elizabeth here. She presented to the facilities committee, committee and then the board this past summer. And we brought that again like last, like I said, last week to the board. She gave us options to use working cash bonds and again, not to exceed the twenty one million. Twenty one million, where do we come up with that? That is a rough estimate of what it might cost us if we wanted, if the board decided to get it. So if, again, we, if, if you approve this today, doesn't mean we're going for twenty one million. It just means we have an opportunity to get new. The fifteen million, if you remember, she talked a little about that. The initial issue would be fifteen million and determine, to determine which project, but fit in those budgets. This is the best opportunity for the, the board to earn interest and pay back under the current Dresden agreement. Again, it gets us the best opportunity to, to do that. And then if you remember too, she also mentioned if we issued bond issues and it gets to greater than ten years, we can also refinance those bonds in the future. Roll along. Is there any questions right now? I feel like I'm just doing out stuff. I wanna make sure I don't go too fast. So possible financial, financial schedule, she gave us August, the, be the resolution of intent. Again, it's just the intent to possibly go after those twenty one million. Then in September, there'll be a public hearing. October, we do a final bond resolution. Then October, November, we have the bond rating and then November, the bond sale and closing of those bonds. So that, that's the timelines you put. I kind of put a more simple line form for everybody, for myself especially. To, just to put it in, in front of us and see what it looks like. So that's kind of the, the word of what things would happen in timeline, if you will. So tonight, the approval of the resolution of intent. And again, that word intent is the really certain word there. Then I'm, I'm fearful that when people see that we're doing this, they're gonna think that we're giving twenty one million dollars. No, this is the intent that we can't. And I think there's something on this, this slide that's real important. So again, the, the board doesn't have to issue any of the twenty, any or all of the twenty one million dollars involved. This is just starting that process. And this is very similar from my, and I learned this over the last week, very similar to the process of construction of the E C C and the high school addition. At that time, the board went for intent, resolution of intent for forty five million. The board only ended up using forty one point five. So that's a perfect situation where you didn't have to use all forty five, so you didn't, the board, and I think you, the previous board. And so the same thing could happen here where we, they said twenty one million, the boards may say, you know what, we're only wanna do ten, we're good there. So again, tonight's approval, when we get to that, is just that, just an intent. And here, here is another important slide, reminders of rationale. Why do this now? Why are we doing this now? Current agreement with Constellation ends December thirty first, twenty twenty six. That'll be the last levy, the, the last levy between twenty, of twenty six and I'll fund F Y twenty eight school year. We wanna make sure again that we're having Dresden paper and compilation paper as much as we can while we have them on the books. We don't know what's gonna happen to the impact of that. The carbon credit legislation also sunsets at that time in June. Constellation has disclosed the intention to revise them, but that's a five-year process. Again, it doesn't mean they're going to, which just means they have, they've disclosed the intention to, but they said they're gonna do it essentially. There's no guarantee that Dresden will remain open during the, if the carbon credit legislation is not renewed or if their license is not extended or at all. So we, we just don't know the life of what Dresden's gonna be. And, and this last is probably the most important thing that I'll say, and this is why the credit capital project stance is going on. But Constellation, like I said, is paying roughly half the bill. So again, intent is the biggest word there. Constellation thing to have our bill, maybe for us to move forward with those. At least with some of them, again, not that I feel all them. And that will lead into the next thing, but I'd be glad to entertain any questions if you have any. Go through that pretty quick, but if you'd like it, please let me know when I get you that.
We've all heard it before.
Yeah.
But I appreciate that. Thank you.
That's, I mean, it's a good point, Mr. Har. It's Jay, Eric, Chris, and I'm sure Jason, I'll, I appreciate the opportunity to lay out where we, where we've been. Because it's that process that you started, you know, a, a week ago in the study session. I mean, like you said, it's from, from one of the first actions you took when you got here was doing the strategic plan. Engaging all the stakeholders, whoever was fifty or sixty or whatever. This is, you know. One of the things that came out of it. So Jason, can you talk about the one slide that just, that just shows the three financing outcomes?
And just, just again, kind of go on record, whatever, you know, I mean, Elizabeth was here last week. We saw the same videos, but. Again, Jason, I mean, the, the, you know, the scenario of looking for some type of balance here between, say, you know, Chris, you, some kind of balance between. Bond debt, our capital spending that we do automatically, you know, within our current reserve position, all addresses paying fifty cents of the dollar. Again, there's no reason to make total sense, right? I mean, that's, I mean, I think you all agree to that. Taking a pretty huge last week was, this isn't a, you know, the, the math works. I mean, the math is there to be able to do this. And I know it's coming up later, that's a steal of thunder, but the scenario is Elizabeth worked out with us is under the current terms of the existing agreement, how this can be paid for. Eighty four, well, you know, Constellation debt, cents of the dollar, under the current agreement, that we can get the priority one projects done, so. So again, just thanks for putting that together. So again, just thanks for putting that together. It's good to remind everybody where we did, especially for, you know, David Singh, I mean, they already knew where the process started, but you're here now and. And even getting the involvement of four board members like Chuck, you know, and and some of the list and whatnot. So it's, it's all good stuff, so. Okay.
I don't, that's it.
Yes, sir, no problem. Then I will enter the first and second motion to authorize administration to request bids for the FY twenty four high school turf project. Anthony moves and Steve seconds. Anything, I mean, you've all talked about it.
And again, this is just to put it out there, if stuff comes back and board decides not to, it's nothing you have, you're not admitting yourself to anything except for receiving bids.
Absolutely. Okay, roll call one, please. Yes. I'll give the first, second motion to approve the resolution declaring the intent to issue not to exceed twenty one million with the cash fund bonds. For the purpose of increasing the district's working cash fund and directing the notice of such intent, we publish in the manner provided by law and the way of reading of the resolution. Sean so moves, seventy seconds. Yeah, that's just what we talked about. So we're just, this is just the intent of our part, nothing crazy. Roll call, please, one of us. Okay, then we have the final reading of the vice district policies, I think you want to mention.
That we think well, again, thanks to Cindy and Steve for their time and we'll be talking about it the next second last thing.
Okay, absolutely. Thank you. It's been a good for your time. All right, then I'll enter the first and second motion to approve the revised district policies as presented. Anthony moves and sending seconds, roll call, please. Okay, moving on to new business then. Enter data first and second motion to approve utilizing Cinder Ridge Golf Facility for the two thousand twenty three, two thousand twenty four golf season. For the terms outlined in the letter of agreement. Sean so moves, Mary seconds. Don't think there's much we can say about that. It's pretty simple.
No, yeah, this is our second year back there. Appreciate Mr. Hutching and Mr. Braze taking care of getting that set up and appreciate Cinder Ridge, it's to be out there.
Absolutely. Okay, roll call, please. First and second motion to accept. Associates and corporate to use the line edition for the annual continuing disclosure as presented. John so moves, Mary seconds.
Something we do every year, and we just take care of it. We use Wave Image Names and Associates to provide help with this, so we appreciate your, absolutely.
Roll call, please, one of them. First and second motion to approve the formal standards aligned curriculum for our continued subject areas as presented. Mary so moves, seventy seconds, Jenny, you wanna save off?
Some are quite a few of our teachers. A lot of teachers coming in to do curriculum work. Along with that came some new mandates that came to the state. One of those is computer literacy standards that were implemented. And we had to have built into our curriculum through K through twelve this school year. So our teachers worked really hard the entire school year, had a parent curriculum and what those standards were. We didn't want to create a new course to cover that because at the high school, it had to be a required course to cover quite a few of these standards. So they worked hard to. See where they fell and they decided that a lot of the standards actually fell on some of our current courses, like our college, like career exploration. And our current events curriculum. So they'd be worth those. We had a new curriculum that we wrote. Keyboarding class that Mr. Klein came up with, that was a part of that. And then also, almost every single one of our fine arts courses, we wrote their curriculum. Coming up next school year, on our state report card, we will have fine arts as an indicator on that. They're working to get that up to par. Because there's a third standard in there that needs to be completed that has student voice. So they incorporated that this year, so they're ready for that implementation.
Any questions, Jim?
And former retirees, or not former retired, retirees is eligible. A lot of time they spend on that. Department leaders spend a lot of time helping them out and proving those that curriculum. So appreciate them and all the ones that came to help.
Thank you. Thank you, Jim, for a long time. I know it's a long time, it's something, I appreciate that. Okay, roll call, please. Okay, first, second motion to approve the three-year agreement with school pass visitors management, annual exhaust of six thousand nine hundred sixty dollars as presented. Sean so moves and Steve seconds, Jay, anything you want to mention about that?
So one of the things that we do when we screen visitors that come into our campuses is we scan their driver's license and what that performs is a background check. Against the sexual offender database. This system will replace this system that we've used for a long time. Because it adds more functionality. One is we can deploy this as kind of self-serve kiosks. Instead of resisting behind our secretary's desk. We can also customize alerts so that if, say, there was a custody issue or an order of protection, we can key those in on our side. It would also screen for that as our visitor in and out of campus. Finally, and most importantly, what this system does is it gives us a way to allow students to check in and check out of the building as well. If you've ever been in one of our buildings, you'll, you've seen like a footboard with a scribble on it and. That's what we're hoping to decipher, right? When a student leaves or comes to the building. This will integrate with our student management system and it will update the attendance tables automatically. With the ultimate goal being that in the event of an emergency, this system will, through the dashboard, show me how many people are in the building right now. How many are gone and where they, where they are. And so I think it helps to tighten up our on-prem security for both, for both our visitors. And it integrates with our student management system as well. So I'd entertain any other questions that the board would have.
So basically, they're just scanning their, they would just scan their ID and now you don't have to worry about that, correct?
When they do, like, different, it's a lot better. Lockdown drills, first drills, like, like anytime that you leave the building or whatnot, is that gonna be part of the drill, like the check against like a teacher saying, hey, I've got one missing?
So not necessarily, but typically where it would come in really useful is in the event that we had to. As part of our crisis plan, there are off-site evacuation areas, right? And so this software gives us the ability to help with reunification. So that in the event that we do have to move students to a different location and parents are coming, say, to the Methodist Church to pick up students instead of the elementary school. Then we have a easier system to be able to interface, to interface with. Okay, any other questions?
Welcome, Mr. Harman. All right, roll call then. Your first, second motion to approve the title one district plan for the coal city community school district number one as presented. Answer moves and Mary seconds.
Yeah, Jim, I don't, Mr. Kirk, if I anything you want to add to it?
Yeah, so just a, just a brief overview. We use our title one funds for our reading specialists, one of our reading specialists. Reading is a lot of intervention, support. This is just a renewal. We. These are pedal on suns very similar, very similarly the last few years, just kind of continuing the plan that was created.
And I can tell you from experience, the title one is titled itself is a very tedious and ongoing process. So I know Luke spends a lot of extra time doing that and I appreciate that they got that. I, I sent those shoes as well as. This is Ken before and I name Mr. Schmidt and old John in there as well, but. Would appreciate the time you spent there because it is something that's very valuable and it does secure some funds for, for a lot of our students. And so appreciate the time you put in for that. Thank you.
Okay, roll call, please. Third, first, second motion to approve the one-year agreement with the public consulting group, all seen as presented. With some moves, Mary seconds.
So this is the software program that we use for our IPs, our fiber boards, data collection, things like that. We've used this program for years and years, long before I was here, just a renewal with a couple options added on. So one of the options or one of the add-ons is the ability to translate. The documents to different languages. And then the other one allows us, or the other add-on allows us to collect electronic signatures. So just a way for us to kind of work a little bit smarter and harder, just kind of getting up to date with the times and things like that. This is coming to the board approval because it is a little bit extra cost, but hopefully it will obviously increase our better communication with parents.
Okay, any, any questions? Okay, well, I'll enter the first, second motion to approve the.
If we can hold on for a second with that one. So I was hoping that by this time we have, we talked with the custody district. Just to re- refresh the memories on this, last year, Matt, we, he went over related work. He spent time with some students for recaster. Because at the last minute, they lost their AP calculus teacher. We paid them extra for doing that. When I say we, we, we build, we cut, they pay the full, full. They're the same boat right now. They've got somebody working and trying to get their, their AP. What we, the problem every now is that because the contract is not been ratified and agreed upon completely, we don't know what the salary would be. So we, we're gonna have to table this. It's okay until the next time and maybe we'll have a special order coming up in the next week or so. Fingers crossed on that and we could possibly do it then. But I had it on there hoping that we'd be able to, to approve that, but I don't want to prove it without having an actual policy. So more from each come out, so I'd like to table that, that's it.
Sure. Any questions about that?
Just, just for the. Just needed motion to table, just a motion, the second, I'm gonna do a roll call with the table, so.
I'll enter the first, second motion to table.
I'll move on that.
Sean moves and seventy seconds.
Yeah, so chrome guidelines. So we, in your folder, I know we put in there the whole city unit one district chrome guidelines. We've had Chromebooks now for since twenty twenty. All twenty twenty, and we're continuing to learn and and make a better use of them. We've had some issues with some students taking advantage of them and, and not treating them properly, essentially. So Mr. Johnson acted, and I was okay with him putting together some guidelines, which he had also took some different school districts that he used them. And put something together to kind of like, here's how you're supposed to be treated. Here's what happens if you don't. Here's what happens if you have a. Your, your, your screen cracks. Here's how to take care of it. Here's what happens if it happens to you more than twice. Honestly, there are some that happen more than probably five or six times. So, yeah. So this is just some guidelines in there that you want to be able to give to the kids and it's mainly for six through twelve because. The pre-k through kindergarten through fifth graders are going to have Chromebooks cards. They're not gonna be taking them home unless they have to check them out for some reason. So, but we're still staying with six through twelve, pretty much they have it for the year. It's, it's theirs to use and take back and forth. But it is property of the school district. So it goes through some guidelines for them to be able to. Follow and say that they signed that they were, they received them, just trying to hold some people accountable for the, their actions and what they were treating the Chromebooks and. It's, it's a, it's an instrument that we use and get you daily, but treated properly shouldn't, it should last the whole year. With some exceptions that happen. Sometimes things, taxes do happen, but some of those things were happening, were not happening. So. I, I know you just got in front of you, you know, take it if you like and take a look at it and we can, if you have questions, we can talk about it next time. But we'd like to go ahead and, and take that and put it out there.
Those that have been networked on their Chromebook. Charging those students' parents.
So, and actually, one of the other things that kind of a great question, one of the things that came out of the spring was a parent said, well, I know where it tells me I have to pay for it. And I, I'd be honest with you, I don't know if that person paid for it this time or not, I can definitely get into it, but that kind of prompted Mr. Johnson saying, hey. We, we put some stuff in play.
Yeah, I, I, for me, you'll have to check and see if somebody that did it last year, but on a moving forward basis, like in the, it would be like anything. It would be, you can't register next year, all your fees are paid or strange scripts are held.
And again, I can tell you that when a student damages a Chromebook and we report that with the parent, the parents are almost a hundred percent compliant with that. With that, there, there are always outliers to that. But in general, to the point, I think having, having written guidelines that ultimately fold into the handbook and be an extension of that handbook are important, but. We're out of the handbook cycle right now, which is why this is a separate kind of document.
Actually, yeah, I would like to, he wants to spend a lot of time on it. He did bring it to a couple of rad meetings and after, for suggestions that are looking over. So appreciate his time on it. It is, it's something that he will be, be used and it'll be nice to have for the students to have it and remember. And all responsible. Yeah, so and it's awesome. Here's what the expectations are. And, and I'm a firm believer that I get asked by, and I've told you what their expectations are. This hopefully will take care of that.
Are, are both, the student and the parents executing it or is just a procedure?
So typically in a handbook deployment, they have the student sign and acknowledge it as well as the parent. And this, I believe, Mr. Johnson's intention is to deliver this in the same, in the same manner. So the students understand that they have a responsibility and the parents understand that they do as well.
Okay, cause as far as enforcing it with students, especially if it's a minor. It's not gonna happen.
Yeah.
I think that's why it's important to have the parents involved in it as well.
Okay, anything else about that? Okay, then let's go on and then. I did first, second motion to approve the resolution authorizing commencement of social media litigation and to wait for reading of the resolution. So moved and then seconds.
Yeah, and so I, I contacted a few other districts just to kind of see if they've heard of this and a couple of who they did and not. But it was something that was suggested, Chris, I shouldn't say suggested, they actively like participate. By one of our legal counsels. We talked about that at the board. To be honest, everything I understand, it doesn't cost the board anything. If we join it, it's. You know, if the mass action lawsuit litigation, it could give us resources as well as some money, money as well as resources to help students. Because of social media platforms that may have the effect that they had on students. If, if, if it goes away and loses, there's no, nothing that the board has to worry about. So up to the board, I, I just want to make sure that they, we were. Ready to go and have all the information.
There's no obligation for us to just go from there. So it makes sense. Any, any questions about that? Roll call, please. Okay, any items now known as agenda time? Or any communication from the board regarding agenda items or any in general? During the six thirty seven, I will enter the first and second motion to want to close session. For the purpose of considering information regarding employment, employment, compensation, discipline. Performance or dismissal of some employees and to let you departmenting matters. Yeah, so number two, second and seconds, roll call, please.